All right, I want to welcome everyone. This is the city of Cottonwood Heights. It's our first meeting back live after many, many, many months and we're glad to be back. Plus, we are meeting virtually as well. Again, this is our business meeting. Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. It's little, well, it's after 7:15. My apologies for being a few minutes late. Better work session before that took a little bit longer than we had anticipated. So again, we appreciate your understanding. We'll begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask our city manager if he'll lead us in that pledge. Tim? Thank you, Tim. Appreciate that. As always, our first item on the agenda is the recognition of one of our Cottonwood Heights Police Department officers, Sergeant Michael Fullwood, who's retiring after eighty-two years, no, twenty-one years, something like that. Robbie, we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Michael Fullwood came to us from West Jordan about five or six years ago and he's been a great addition. He got promoted to the rank of sergeant contributed well and represented the city well. He's elected to take his retirement, at least for a while, and we wish him well in his endeavors. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, and Mike, we want to wish you well. All right. With that being said, the next item on our agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity where citizens can share with us their thoughts, concerns, issues. We like keep those comments to three minutes and we have a clock to my left that you can look at. Also, we remind those who are making public comments to please be civil. We would encourage you not to make personal attacks or the drug or comments are not really pertinent to the discussion. And again, of course, you have the right to speak and we appreciate that right that we all have to share our thoughts and comments. So we'll open up to be now for citizen comments. We'll first open it up to those who are here with us in person, then we may have some online that will taken just a minute. So anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment, actually, I do have a couple of people signed up. The one and only Tim Halbeck. Tim, come on up. I hardly recognize you with the hat and those things on your chin, but.
I've never done this before, so I'll go with you. Oh, as far as city business goes, there was the issue of, one of the things you're going to discuss tonight was the fireworks contract with somebody. I don't know what it's like around here, but around my house, it's super, super dry. The whole hill aside from, you know, I live on the other side of the Brighton High School, right downhill. That whole hill is super dry. So we're going to put up our own no fireworks, please signs, you know, around. So I don't know what the policy is for the city on that for the rest of the city, but I imagine it's pretty dry around here as well. So what do you guys got going on? And then, of course, my two jokes of the day. Let's see. Oh, french fries. You know, the very first french fries were not actually cooked in France. They were cooked in grease. All right, okay. Oh, I bought a, I bought a book trying to work on my speaking skills. So I bought a book about being less condescending. Can't put it down. All right.
Thanks, Tim. And again, as the city, we tried a few years ago to ban fireworks completely in our community, but again, the state overrode us. Now we work very closely hand in hand with our UFA fire representatives to protect any area that's a risk and with our fireworks, it's it's something that has meets all those requirements at Butler Park. Okay, Dennis Iverson, Dennis, come on up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity and I know that you have a lot of things on your plate, so I hope this will not be counteracted or in any way. That's a little bit of a facetious comment. I've made three notes. On May 4th, in the city council meeting that was by Zoom, the definition on short-term rentals was discussed. It was proposed that Cottonwood Heights would eliminate the vagueness of the then three to thirty-day definition and adopt the state definition of less than thirty. Has that been officially done? Yes or no?
Not yet.
Is it being worked on? And it's been a month. Seems like that one was a no-brainer. I'll go to the next one.
Well, that's duly noted and I assure you that the man to my far right will put on his note and we'll see where we are.
Has there been a sincere effort on the part of Cottonwood Heights Council and attorneys to make a Class B misdemeanor for short-term rentals a more severe penalty? Right now, it's up to a thousand dollars. I'm wondering if it couldn't be a thousand dollars, not simply up to a thousand. How can professional property managers come into a community like Cottonwood Heights, which has happened in our subdivision? And not know that short-term rentals are not allowed in R1 neighborhoods and simply have a slap on the wrist? People here in the council have actually told me that when they go, they are fined less than $200, both when they plead guilty or if they go to the judge, it's still less than $200. To quote one person in the last meeting, they said, many viewed it as the cost of doing business. So again, something, my last question. State law says advertising short-term rentals is restricted in restricted areas does not actually constitute a violation. It says the violator must be actually caught in the act of doing it, which we have done. And they go to the property owner and he says, oh, they're just visitors, they're family. We asked about having, we identified the van that they were in as a rental van, Avis. Said, could you get the name of the people that rented it and where they were from? No, we'd have to issue a subpoena. Why can't such advertising even, why, why can such advertising be allowed and not be ordered to be deleted? Isn't it encouraging a violation of known ordinances by the renter in restricted areas like Cottonwood R1 neighborhoods? And I'm glad that, was it Tim that commented? Because I have a little analogy that I'm really equate to that. Let's say there's an advertisement that says, I have fabulous fireworks especially brought in from Macau that can go up to 500 feet and spectacular fireballs in incredible colors. Now, that may be legal for the city or approved organizations to do, but it is not legal for any regular citizen to have for their own event. So if that's the case, why can't it happen that advertising is for short-term rentals in known R1 neighborhoods be told to be deleted? It's my final question. Thank you.
Dennis, thank you for your comments and I assure you that our city manager will be back and contact me to update you on several of those questions and we'll talk more. Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to make comment?
Mayor, I have, I have one, just a written comment that someone submitted.
Please, then Paul, you can see if we have anybody online.
Just for the, for the record, Maggie and Steve Fowler had additional questions about short-term rentals and some of the questions that were asked previously as well as information about Representative Benyon on finding out some information about state code. We'll reply to them, but want this to be part of the record. So they know that it will be part of the public record and we'll forward this to the council.
And you'll be back in touch with.
Mayor, if there are only two comment cards, I think Tim has some updates that it might be worthwhile to just share those.
Well, I just wanted to, we have it be else online. Who wants their hands up?
I mean, I put that on your screen to see. It's, it's up there. There's nobody at the moment.
Okay, thank you. No, Tim, go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm working with our city attorney Shane Topham and we are preparing an ordinance to bring forward to you to address some of the concerns that were mentioned a few weeks ago. That will be coming here in the near future to the council meeting for discussion and then consideration.
I think it's safe to say, Mr. Iverson, that the council was generally supportive of your position and your request and it'll be coming.
Mayor, may I also mention that the, we've also contacted the Utah League of Cities and Towns about some of the concerns with short-term rentals. And they've agreed to have this be part of their discussion meetings with some of the land use committees that they have in place in preparation of looking at some proposals for the state legislature in the, in January.
Yeah, and another issue tied to all this is accessory dwelling units, which is the legislature as is mandating that all cities implement. And we're also trying to find out how we will do that based upon what they're requiring and our draft ordinance that we've had over the last couple of years that we've worked on. So that's another issue that's related to all this. Yeah. Okay, any any other comments? Here and then I'll close the citizen comment period. And now following the agenda, item 5.0. We have two public hearings tonight that the audience or people online are welcome to comment regarding. The first is item 5.1. We are willing to take or excited to take comment on our proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021 or 2020 and 2021. Scott, you want to introduce that quickly? Before we take the comment.
Okay, so I think we can see most of it here on the screen. So the, the budget adjustment that we're proposing is predominantly in the general fund and then a little bit in the capital improvement fund. So the total in the general fund that we're proposing is $39,211 of added expenditures and $39,211 of added revenues. Number one is Public Works. They scrapped some signs, took them to the recycler and then got $794. Would like to utilize that money to buy additional signs. That one is just one that's requested. It's not one that's we're obligated to do by agreement with the, for the grant or what have you. Item number two is the sort like, or the Sully, the Cottonwood Heights Arts Council has the recipient of a ZAP grant for $13,990 to do various things related to the musical and presentation of that that will last into future years as well. Number three through eight are different police agreements. Some are overtime reimbursement grants. For number three is that for the state highway safety DUI, that's $8,622. The state highway speed and seatbelt overtime grant, that's 1,129. A grant from CCJJ to be used for police training for 6,426. Bulletproof vest grant reimbursement. This is actually a federal agreement here on this one. That's for $4,786. Then police restitution to offset damages, vehicle damages that were repaired at our cost for $714. And then event overtime for the three events noted here for $2,750, adding up to that 39,211. The item in the capital improvements fund is to recognize the budget adjustment to utilize transportation impact fees to cover the transportation plan update. This is a contract that was put in place at council meeting on February 2nd of this year. And we're now recognizing that in a budget adjustment as we had not yet done a budget adjustment since that time that that was put in place. Thirty-nine thousand seven hundred, but there's no revenue offset because those are funds that were collected in prior periods. That's the extent of the adjustments for the current year.
Okay, give the council any last questions regarding these budget adjustments? Now, I'm assuming the public hearing Shane are two separate public hearings? Yeah.
Yes.
So thank you, Scott, and we'll now open the public hearing for item 5.1. Proposed a budget amendment for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Any comments from the public regarding that proposed budget amendment? Thank you. Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing on item 5.1, the proposed budget amendment and move to item 5.2. Proposed adoption of the city's budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And Scott will turn it over to you again. And this is the public hearing regarding this item.
All right. Okay, so I'm not going to go through everything in total entirety because much of it has been gone over several, several times from May 4th forward as we've gone through tentative budget process and others. But I will summarize things at the end from a fund level perspective, just so that it's somewhat clear to hopefully to everybody. But I will go through the items that were recommended as a change from the tentative budget that was adopted and has been on display starting on May 4th. So all right, I hope to cut all that. So moving to right here, the recommendations. So the things that we have added in here is we have added in the 400,000 in revenue from UDOT. We anticipated this revenue, but weren't sure of the mechanics of how that would come in. We've now confirmed that that will be paid directly to us from UDOT in about January of our budget year and we will come in as a revenue to the general fund and then be transferred to the capital projects fund to help cover various project costs that are related with that specifically transportation and orient. In the general fund, as noted in here, Hospital 128 was approved this year. That bill allowed us to keep a maximum of 35% of fund balance if need, if desired by, by council. You don't have to do any special things. The former limit was 25% and the, how you calculate that is you take the total revenues times 25% or 35% and that's how much you were allowed to keep as a fund balance. We're going to be just barely over 25% at like 25.3% if we were to adopt the budget how it's spec out in this document at this point in time. We did update our long-term disability, short-term disability and minimum life costs. We went out to bid on those costs and received a much better resolution where we actually reduced our cost by $19,000 from prior year. The original bid that we had when we did the tentative budget was a $15,000 increase. So that's quite a good swing in terms of the overall cost of those items. We included a net of $6,700 to go towards a match for the Utah State Historic Preservation Grant. And that's not $6,700 in expense. It's more than that in expense. And I should have looked that up since the business or since the work meeting here offset by a little bit of revenue, but that's the net amount that's in that historic preservation ground. We included $21,000 to go towards updating our tasers. A couple of things with that, one is that it will turn on the, when it'll turn on the body camera when a taser is, is activated. And the other thing is, is our tasers are not in, in the service window when they're recommended to be. So this will get them to where we're, we have tasers that are in that service window once again. We updated the fire cost to be at 117, 727. In our tentative budget, we had included that at $161,000. So that's about a $43, $44,000 reduction there. In the capital projects fund, we added 50,000 for the sidewalk 50-50 program. This is an amount that we had removed out of the budget for the current budget year that we're in because of concerns about pandemic revenues and what that would do. It's proposed, it was discussed in our last city council meeting to potentially put that back in. And so we did that. We included the 150,000 in grant revenue from the Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant. This was an oversight by me. I knew that that needed to be in their last budget meeting and I forgot about that. But it was not included either in the tentative budget that we have. And that's a direct offset to our Ferguson Canyon Park project cost that we already have totally budgeted at this time. And then we currently have added 173,504 both engineering and property acquisition for the 13, or sorry, the 1700 east sidewalk project. That's made up of I think it was 144,000.
Thirty-eight five for engineering and 135 for.
Yeah. That's right. And, and so what, what we're, that's what's included in here. Again, this was a suggestion based on a negotiation and talk that we had between the city manager, myself and the public works director. And so we, this can be adjusted any which way. And then it was already talked about potentially backing out the property acquisition on that. As we move forward and then there, there's a placeholder right now. The last couple of items is there's a placeholder of 350,000 for the solar grant for City Hall. That project is $516,000. We, it could be as much as $400,000. And in our update that we had in our last meeting, we're very hopeful that that could be, we should get final word back on that next week and hopefully be able to update you on that for sure before we adopt budget, but before we get to that. And then we are also waiting for our final certified tax rate and property tax revenue, which includes our new growth amount. We've estimated $50,000 of new growth. I think last year we were about $64,000 of new growth in, in our terms of our net property tax revenue, which comes from actual new build type stuff, not from reassessment of value. And we're waiting for that. That should be available around June 10th, give or take. And when we get that, we will incorporate that into the budget. Anything that's in the budget can be adjusted between now and when we adopt our budget and even after we adopt the budget, it can also be adjusted. We just have to advertise properly in order to be able to do adjustments. But we are ready to, in 14 days from tonight, we'll be able to go forward and adopt the budget. I'm just going to scroll down here for a quick moment.
Well, just before you proceed, I think it's important, maybe if you would note or maybe share with the audience. You take the last couple of years, what's the average amount of underspent? I think it's important for everyone to understand, even though a budget is allocated, there's still accountability through the whole year as far as expenditures. The last couple of years, we've underspent by several hundred thousand each year.
Yeah, we generally, so our total budget, if you will, is right around, you know, 17, 18 million dollars in terms of our general fund expenditures. Our capital fund just kind of keeps repeating it depending on how much we get done in any given year. But in our general fund, we're about $18 million in expenditures. You can see that here, that the current budget is projected at just under 18 and a half million. We typically are seeing in the three to five percent range in terms of under expend. So 1% on that would be $185,000. So you know, we can get 360 to $500,000 of under expend in any given year. And I would say 3% is probably about as minimum as it really gets because it's hard for us to operate as, part of the state law is we can't over expend our budget. And so we always operate with some under expend and 3% is really pretty good. If, you know, if we were to give everybody a dollar and say, go down to the local convenience store and, and try and spend it all. You can't usually spend a dollar. You can spend 97 cents, 96 cents, maybe 98 cents if you're lucky, but you're going to be hard pressed to try and spend that whole dollar if you don't have any, you know, additional funds you can poke for. And that's kind of the state that we're in. The other thing is, is we are being conscious about the funds that we're spending. We're not just trying to spend them willy-nilly without a purpose and a need. And, and the directors are doing a great job with that. And we do review that on a regular basis with our directors throughout the year. But you can see in here, it lists out the different funds. One of the new funds for this year that's being recommended is the stormwater fund. This, we've been talking about stormwater fees and things along those lines. Talks about this, this summary shows your beginning balance, your revenue that would be coming in, your expenditures going out, any transfers that could be either going in or out depending on the fund, the projected ending fund balance. And that, that assumes that you're going exactly according to budget. In the current year that we're in, we're, our sales taxes are a million plus better than what they were budgeted for because we thought we were going to see about a million dollar reduction in our, in our sales taxes. So we get both under expend in terms of expenses and we get, sometimes get a little bit of extra money. Usually it's not a million dollars. Usually it's maybe 100,000 or 200,000 dollars. But this year it's, it's, it's larger than that. And this beginning balance reflects our latest estimate of where we think that will land. And that could be a little different than that when it finally comes in. You can see the change in fund balance from a budgeted perspective, even though it's our general fund shows we'll use $751,000. In reality, I would actually guess that we would be near flat by the time you incorporate under expend and expenditure lines and miscellaneous revenues that come in that are not directly budgeted at this point in time. And then if this all came in along these lines, there's certain fund restrictions, unrestricted fund balance. And we've talked about this a time or two and we're going to talk about it more is the PTO vesting balance. That's 513,000 in the general fund. But we kind of list out what these different funds are, what they're doing. You can see the net transfers in and out is always going to be zero because we've got to, we're transferring money out somewhere. It's got to go in somewhere. And so that's going to sum up between all of our funds and net to zero. Revenues, most of our ongoing revenues come into our general fund. There are a few revenues that are specific to funds. Some of them come into our capital projects funds. And you can see that here. And usually that's in the form of grants or other contributions that are directly, directly related to projects. We also do sometimes have a little bit of interest that hits a fund for some reason or another based on the unspent balance we, we allocate interest out. And then the, the money here is our community development renewal fund. We're expecting that to be triggered this year. And that would be estimated revenues that would come in on that and then expand back out, leaving us with this ending fund balance that matches our Cottonwood Corporate and our Fort Union project amounts that we have there that could be utilized for projects in those various areas. But this is a good summary that kind of gives you those ideas. If you, if you really want to get into more details, you can go down and you can see classifications of revenues as she go through and you can see that and see that all add up. You can get into, you know, classifications of expenditures and see that. And it's in there by fund and there are several of these. And the tentative budget is out there and ready and available for anybody. The only items that are changed are those, that list that I went through just at the beginning of the.
And the audience can obtain this from the webpage, right?
Yeah, the tentative budget they can. This one, not yet, but I will work with Lindsay to get this put out so that this one is available tomorrow. We'll leave the tentative out there, but we'll put this as an update to it.
Do you think it makes sense to, I know in the budget committee, council member Brackett and I had some discussions on how much revenue to include because that also I think affects that number. Do you want to take a minute to talk about, I think we're pretty concerned, some would say maybe too conservative, maybe?
Yeah, let me see if we can zoom this up a little bit more. So we are being pretty conservative. So for instance, and this is, sorry, this is kind of big and I don't, so I'm cutting off some of the titles just so we can kind of see this a little bit easier here. But this will be a good example of what President Michael is talking about. This line item here of 7.2 million dollars, this is our projection of our sales tax revenue for the current year. But the current year's budget was set at 5,750,000. And I'm going to scroll back just a teeny bit. The prior fiscal year that we actually received money was 6,719,000. Six million, 719,000. So in a normal year, non-pandemic, I probably would have estimated us to be in the upper $6 million range, you know, maybe 68, 69, something along those lines. However, we were all worried when we were setting our budgets last year and didn't really know what was going to happen. So we cut down our budget to 5,750,000, trying to be conservative, trying to not spend money that we may not receive. However, it looks like we're going to be in the seven plus million dollar range. However, going into our budget, and you can see this reflected in our tentative budget here However, going into our budget, and you can see this reflected in our tentative budget here as well as in our proposed adopted here that is kind of reflected in what I've gone over. We've estimated that at seven million, two hundred thousand. If you look at the trends that we've had, we've always gone up on the years that we've gone up in the, I'll say three to six percent range. Sometimes it's been a little bit better than five percent. And we've really seen that kind of growth. And quite literally, I don't know that we'll be as slow as seven million, two hundred thousand dollars. It could be better than that, but we're trying not to be overly optimistic in what's going on and get us into a hole where potentially we don't receive that revenue and are stuck with expenses out there that we're now scrambling to try and cut back and try and figure out how we're going to balance the budget, basically. So we're, is that a good explanation of that?
I, I think so. I don't, I don't know that we spent much time as a council talking about that. But maybe I'm wrong, but I, I think that was something that's, Councilmember Brackett and I spent some time where that would come in.
So you were more conservative than I am. Go figure. No, the seven-two, I think is a good, solid, conservative number. I would certainly rather have you come in January, February, and March next year saying, we're going to hit this. Maybe be a little bit over rather than come, have you come and say, we need to find a quarter of a million dollars of cuts to make our balance, our budget balance. That nobody wants to deal with.
I, I will always want to tell you, we're going to receive a little more money than we have budgeted and always want to tell you that we're going to spend a little less money than we have budgeted.
And I think we appreciate the tracking, the trending, and the comparative analysis that goes into all these numbers. And, and for our, for audience, the, the way the council looks at this, we have two council members assigned to a benefits and compensation committee to meet with staff and to review that, so the council's involved. Then we have two council members that meet with staff, Scott and our city manager, who are the, the budget committee. And as you just witnessed, they ask questions and review all these issues as well. So it's, it's, it's a long process. It's almost an annual process, yeah.
And, and we'll take this information once the budget's adopted, and we'll update our five-year plan to include this plus, you know, any other, you know, items that we kind of figure are coming so that we can keep you apprised. And then that is a good tool to help you as you go into your planning, like you said, for the next budget year.
Yep.
So.
All right. Any last comments, questions regarding the budget or Scott again?
Scott, I think that's a great way to do it. If you count your chickens before they're hatched, you have problems.
Yeah.
And it's good to be, I love to see some of the, some of the savings that we've seen, whether, you know, in different departments like that. It's wonderful to see some of those because it's just like the budgets you have in your home. You, you do not want to, we cannot overspend. There's a lot of needs people want out there, but we need to really decide what, what can we afford? And I, I think it's good that you're very conservative in that, and it helps us especially in budgeting.
Well, it's nice to be presently surprised with additional income as we saw this year, even though it's a pandemic because those of us who were around three years ago and we, we went through truth and taxation, truth and taxation and raised taxes because the projection at that time was that we'd be in that same scenario this year. But because of that conservative approach as far as revenue projections and accountability on spending and some other good luck, we are in a, I think, a sound financial state, which I'm proud to leave term as mayor this year and have a budget that's looks that good. So thank you. Any final comments? Okay, thank you, Scott. We will now again refer everyone to the agenda item five point two, where we'll now open the public hearing regarding our proposed city budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. If anybody in the audience would like to make public comment on that proposed budget. Tim, do you have any in writing?
No.
All any on Zoom? I know if you've been joining us over the last few months, this, we've been going over this regularly. So hopefully people are feel informed and they can access it on the webpage or contact anyone in the city and glad to share any detail. Seeing there's no comment, we will close the public hearing on proposed adoption of the city's budget for the next fiscal year. And we'll now move to our action items for the evening. The first item is consideration of ordinance three fifty-six approving amendment to the twenty twenty-one twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget that we just talked about. It's, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Any final comments or questions on that budget amendment? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the proposed ordinance number three fifty-six.
I move that we approve ordinance three fifty-six.
It's been moved by Councilor Michael. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any final comments, questions? You know, they call for the vote, Councilmember Brackett.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, and Councilor Bruce is excused. The next item is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, accepting requests for indemnification. Shane, do you want to introduce that, please?
Mayor, I think there, there's an item you missed as far as the three fifty-seven with the rezone.
I, I jumped right past it. I, I apologize. Let me go back to item six point two. It's a consideration of ordinance three fifty-seven A approving the rezone of a point-three acre real property located on twenty-seven fifty-one East Fort Union Boulevard, just above the elementary school on the north, north side of the street. So Michael, you introduce.
Sorry, Mayor, if I, if you don't mind if I interrupt. Given this is tallies or Councilmember Bruce's district, is it? And she's not here tonight, is, should we be considering tabling this? Or I, I know that you, you respect those of us who represent certain districts and things in their districts. I just mentioned it. I don't know how she was going to vote on this, but.
What problems does that cause staff to postpone this for two weeks? That's, that's a really good point, and I traditionally have always respected, you know, when we have something that's particular to us, particular to a certain district, yeah.
I mean, that's the council's decision. We have a, you know, a vested applicant waiting on a decision that had relatively little public input. So that, that's the council's decision.
Thoughts, Council? I, I'm actually ready to move ahead with a couple of conditions, and I, I think it's pretty straightforward, but.
Has Council Bruce mentioned anything to you about this, about to anyone?
She's had questions that I've answered via email, but she hasn't indicated any concerns or any thing like that, just questions.
But again, it's a good point. It's, you know, she represents that district, and if there was something, I wouldn't want to not have that, her have that opportunity. Anyone opposed to tabling it till the next meeting to allow that representative to be at present?
If I can issue, I would hope not. Not, yeah, I hope the applicant's here, but I'm, I'm ready to move forward. I mean, like, I made my comments earlier. I think with the conditions, I, I'd be ready to move forward, but I'm certainly.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not.
In my position, I'm ready to move forward, and I would be supportive with some of those conditions as well, but.
So I think what may help us, because I think.
Sorry, I might just chime in here. I, I would feel better about voting for this, knowing where she stood on this, given it's her district.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any objection to postponing it. I would just, yeah.
So, so what may be helpful? I think that would be a different ordinance document where, if there were a, a consensus desire to impose zoning conditions. That's technically a different, we'd demarcate that differently, and, and it would be listed differently in the ordinance. So if there's consensus to proceed with, with potential zoning conditions to limit the uses that Councilmember Brackett described, I would, I will need to consult with the applicant on that and, and see if, if he agrees to modify his application accordingly. And then that would be reflected in an updated legislation document.
And we can hear from each member, and then we can still talk to Councilor Bruce.
Well, then maybe that's, maybe then that's, that would solve both problems. We would need, you'd need some time to do that. So my, my suggestion would we strike the conditional uses listed under A, which were the retail medical, those types of things on that particular property. Obviously, if someone came and wanted to do that in the future, they could. They would just need to get an additional zone change, but that would give you an opportunity to ask the applicant if they're amenable to it, and then also have.
Councilmember, what, what are, what are the other?
It says medical, optical, dental.
So just, just as you're talking about.
Yes, those are listed under A.
You had also mentioned M.
M, the reception center, yeah, that was mentioned. As far as it.
I, I guess I could see that occurring in the current building that's there.
It'd be hard with parking, yeah.
I think it would, unless the, the property were to acquire additional properties and merge, anything that requires any sort of addition or redevelopment is, is almost impossible, given the current dimensions of the lot.
So the only proposed zoning condition would be striking A.
That would be my, what I would ask the applicant.
Conceptually, I, I concur based upon what we've done in the same area. But I want to hear from the other council members. I was still, so Mike, what does that mean to you then, going back to the applicant?
I will need to, to meet with the applicant to, to see if, if he agrees to amend his application to include a condition that, or I guess exclude medical, optical, and dental offices as a potential future use on the site.
How does that interplay with L? L, as in Larry. If you're striking A, would you strike L as well?
Yeah, tho- those to me seem very similar.
Yeah. And Mike, maybe you could communicate with the council individually and Councilor Bruce and just kind of get a understanding before the next meeting on A and L, if there's any other concern area.
Yeah, and I, I assume the rationale there is the, the the frequency of vehicle trips with those uses, is that correct?
And some of it, I mean, we, we have a lot of that, that type of RO usage on Highland, which is fine, and I think works there. I don't think it works quite as well this far east up Fort Union Boulevard.
Well, parking, parking would be another issue related, yeah. You know, I look at the one up the street, and that's a little bit problematic.
Yeah, the, the full retail, I understand, and that, that would not be allowed in RO. The full, the intense retail or, or food establishments or those kind of high, high turnover places.
I can't speak to what the Planning Commission was. Those were, those would be mitigating factors for me that I could then be supportive of.
Their, their primary finding, I believe, is they were concerned that it was pocket zoning, which i- is not an issue from a, an administrative or legal perspective.
If the council's inclined to continue this, then we'd need a motion second voice vote.
And then let's move that we continue this until our next meeting.
It's been moved by Councilor Brackett that we continue this to our next meeting.
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Michael. Any further comments, questions? Call for the vote, Councilman Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brackett.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, and Councilmember Bruce is excused. Thank you. Now, if I can get on course again, item six point three is consideration of a resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two accepting requests for indemnification. Shane?
Eight city employees have been named as defendants in a recently filed lawsuit concerning the city's response to the protest in the Mill Hollow neighborhood on August second of twenty twenty. The city employees have filed with the city requests for indemnification pursuant to the Governmental Immunity Act of Utah. The city is required to accept those requests and provide defense and indemnity to the city employees to the extent that those acts occurred during the performance of the employee's duties or within the scope of the employee's employment by the city or under color of authority. So this resolution will accept the request for defense and indemnification subject to a reservation of rights by the city where, where under the city would be entitled to withdraw and terminate defense and indemnity if it turns out through discovery in the lawsuit that the subject acts and emissions didn't occur within those parameters.
Thank you, Shane. Any comments or questions regarding this proposed resolution for consideration?
Just, just for clarity's sake, the way I, I've looked at it is so long as a municipal employee is doing their job, they're doing their job under policy and within the law, we're, we offer them that end. We've, we've done this in the past.
Correct, and I think if you look at the agenda, it's, it's well articulated under.
Very well explained.
On the item.
I, I would just state that it's not optional to the city. State law requires the city to provide that defense and indemnity under those circumstances.
Hey, any further comments, questions regarding the proposed resolution?
Move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty.
It's been moved by Councilmember Brackett. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
They seconded by Councilperson Peterson. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, I'd call for the vote. Councilman Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Brackett.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, and Councilmember Bruce is. The next item, six point four, is consideration of a resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three awarding a retiring police officer his badge and approving his purchase of a police firearm. Robbie, you want to introduce that for the audience real quick?
Sure, this is related to Sergeant Mike Ford, who's been working with the sheriff with. That is an old habit. I just spread on out. Has been working with the City of Cowan Heights for several years. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant. He served as well, and we're asking the support recognizing his dedicated service by awarding his badge and allowing us to award the weapon at a minimal cost. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Chief. That's something we've done for retiring officers in the past. Any further comments, questions regarding this proposed resolution? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three.
It's been moved by Councilmember Michael. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Final comments, questions? Hearing none, I'd call for the vote. Councilor Brackett.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, and Councilor Bruce is excused. The next item is six point five, consideration of a resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four approving a firework display contract with Lantus Productions for twenty twenty-one Butlerville Days. Tim, do you want to introduce that or Scott?
I, well, if you want to do it. Yeah, this is the contract to have the professional firework display done for the city. Cost is twelve thousand, five hundred and two installments. We're recommending approval and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. It's a highlight of Butlerville Days. It's one of the best fireworks shows in a small community estate, so, and well planned and well supervised by our local fire department. So any final comments, questions? So any final comments, questions?
I might, I, I thank Tim Halbeck for bringing up the same concern that was running through my mind with, with the dry, the dry vegetation that we have. Maybe, would, would you mind sharing with us some of the things that you'll do as our fire support?
Absolutely. So our prevention team will come out and take a look at the site and they won't even sign up on the permit unless it meets all the requirements to safely shoot that size and type of firework. So there's a lot of legwork that goes into that and then working directly with the firework company. Then on top of that, when we do authorize a shoot, we'll have our fire apparatus stage. If there's an area at risk, they'll have an engine there or something to step back up anything that might happen. And so we coordinate that very closely with the companies. Then we've also been known to cancel a few shows if the weather parameters don't fit within the prescription. So we, we watch that pretty close up to the moment. Sometimes that's a kind of delicate decision because we know a lot of money and interest is involved there. But we always try to act with obviously the safety of the community in mind. And that starts with the inspection process with the firework company well in advance, so.
What I'm impressed historically too is, is after the show, they do a sweep of the area that's very thorough before you even allow the public to walk on the site.
Yeah, and, and more of this will be authorized. It's usually a pretty safe location where it's very low risk to any type of vegetation or open space. That's definitely one of our requirements and the firework companies as well don't want to take that risk.
Thank you. And Councilmember Michael, thank you for having him do that. Appreciative. And Tim, for you raising that question, it's very important to us, not just on the fireworks, but just fireworks as a whole in our city and, and maybe in our next meeting, we'll give Riley an opportunity to maybe update us on our restricted areas because it's quite extensive.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do so. And we did add new areas this summer, which were concerns in previous years. And so I'd be happy to share the map and discuss that.
In fact, that's scheduled for our next meeting. Riley will be presenting his report, but is also going to have a conversation with us at that meeting.
Good.
Well, one advantage we do have is as a city is we actually have fire trucks that we can call to when we light up fireworks and make sure that it's right.
Yeah, we.
Lay citizens don't have that strength of ability.
Yeah, we definitely take that very serious and we'll, we plan that well in advance so we can make that happen and not compromise our normal service delivery, so.
Christine, did you have another comment? You were.
Oh, I was just asking, Tim, if, if you could broaden your conversations next time to talk about some of the hillside protection that residents can take, consider.
Yeah, definitely. This is a great time of year. We'll do it in the newsletter, but it's always, I mean, it's never too soon to prepare for wildfire season in Utah. So we can definitely talk about just some of the basic steps to that homeowners can take on their own to prepare themselves, but also things that we're doing as a city to help address that concern.
Yeah. No, it's, it's a serious issue. I don't mean to make light of it this year more than ever. So appreciate that and we'll have that as a, an update in a future meeting. With that being said, we have Resolution 2021-24 regarding the fireworks display for Butlerville Days. Entertain a motion for approval.
To approve.
It's been moved by Councilor Bracken. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
And seconded by Councilperson Peterson. Any further discussion, comments? Hearing that, I'll call for it. Councilor Michael.
Yes.
Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes and Councilor Bruce is excused. Okay, one of our last items is consideration of Resolution 2021-25 approving contracts for performing performances at our 2021 Butlerville Days. Tim, you want to introduce that for us, please?
Yeah, this, these are contracts with a number of different groups, which includes musical and, and other performers. There's contract amounts that we have built in and there's some that are a thousand dollars, some that are 800. We're recommending approval. As our city attorney mentioned, there will be other contracts that will be coming in another meeting. These are the ones that we're recommending for tonight.
May I have a question? How do we, how do we get to the point of recommendation for this? Is it, do they audition for you?
They haven't for me, but fortunately we have a great committee and we have great people like Ann Etchell that works with these groups, does her due diligence and.
I don't know any of the group, but that's, that's on me. Committee and specifically the person we have over the entertainment really does finding things that will be popular.
All you had to say is Ann Etchell. But I did see.
Jamie, Jamie Jackson too, I know that's been heavily involved with that.
Who's that?
Jamie Jackson.
Yeah.
The name caught my eye, Hypno Hick. That's the one that caught my eye, but I'm sure he's good.
That's Riley's brother. All right, entertain a motion for adoption of Resolution 2021-25 for performing contracts for Butlerville Days.
I move that we approve, Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilperson Peterson. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Councilor Bracken. Any further comments, questions? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilperson Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes and Councilmember Bruce is excused. Last item of business is our consent calendar. It's approval of city council work session and business meeting minutes for May 18th, 2021. Entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar. Does anybody want to go home?
I move. I move that we approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember Peterson. Have a second.
Second.
And seconded by Councilor Michael. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show unanimous. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's any other business before the council. It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. We adjourned. We have a second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
More important, any opposed? Hearing none, let the record show that it was unanimous. We are now adjourned.